Going.
Well.
Counselor Barnes, myself, and the mayor, and Jill are traveling together. Okay?
Yes.
About tomorrow night, what are we doing tomorrow night? Are we doing that group?
What time is everybody finding me there?
My son.
Counselor Brown has a mummy-son date.
Okay, can we make it so that... How many of you want Jill to make reservation for, I mean, seven o'clock?
They have a place right there in the hotel, it's very nice. For what, seven, seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty?
Seven o'clock would be fine.
So there'll be one, two, three, four, five, six of them.
Counselor Brown. Seven o'clock? Yes, when they're taking seven o'clock to get across the city.
Okay, so seven...
We have cell phones, so...
So seven thirty.
Yeah, seven thirty.
At least six of them.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Six E bylaw, sixteen hundred noise bylaw. We have a situation, counsel, bring it to your attention. The LDS churches, excuse me, are looking at subcontractors to... for snow removal. They would like to have their sidewalks clean between six and seven o'clock so they're all ready for the bishops and so forth to meet. That goes against our noise bylaw. All of the other businesses in town, like Extra Foods, Mass Gas, and so forth, they clean their sidewalks at any given time. Three o'clock, four o'clock, five o'clock. So they're really, you know...
Goosey-goosey.
Well, and they're against our bylaw. So we need to look at this bylaw and change some changes in it. Bylaws in front of you? Yes.
Have we had any complaints from people about the early snow removal?
No, I don't think so. The town can remove the snow at any given time.
So the bylaw exempts the town for snow removal purposes to do it before. But I guess I'm throwing out there, is it reasonable to have an exemption for institutional and commercial property?
Definitely.
Absolutely.
And the Extra Foods is theirs at one in the morning, two in the morning?
You don't have a lot of...
I mean...
...duty here and there, but...
Within reason.
Is there a problem with allowing the church parking lot to be cleaned early in the morning?
Shouldn't be.
I mean, it seems to me...
What we're going to have to do then is ask for administration...
Just add the churches as a part of the listing.
What did you call it?
Religious...
Like institutional properties?
Yeah.
That's all.
So the school, for example, on weekdays will clear its walks before 7:00 AM. I go to the gym at six and they're almost done.
Absolutely, I mean, it makes sense, otherwise it's a safety issue.
Absolutely.
Temple cleans their sidewalks early in the morning too, so...
So what's the issue? There's none...
So the recommendation goes to administration to fix it. So we okay with all institutional and commercial properties in there?
I would say so.
And we'll see what the feedback looks like.
If my neighbor cleans mine, I'm good with that.
And what time, what time do you want to enforce this? Or just leave it open?
There won't be a time.
Leave it open.
About night? What's your nighttime?
Well, are we just exempting them from the noise bylaw for snow removal?
We don't need to say a time.
Yeah, the weather's driven us along a little bit, bypasses everything else.
And you have churches next to you. It makes sense that they're going to come and clean up the parking lot. Otherwise, how do you do it?
That's right.
You know, I have done some of the cleanup.
Okay, so we'll just ask administration to make changes? Yes.
I have a little bit of a problem with snow removal. I look after a property up in the South Hill.
But do we talk about that bylaw or something else?
Yeah, it has something to do with the bylaw.
All right.
I try bringing it up. Anyways, I'm in charge of making sure that snow is off of that sidewalk. I know soon to get that sidewalk cleared off and the Department of Highways is up there and plows it right back on. They plow that road several times a day. And it's almost impossible to keep that sidewalk because the sidewalk is right against the curb.
At one time, we asked the local item to please slow down and they do it on Main Street as they come into town.
Yeah.
So they're not throwing that...
But they go right up against the curb and it doesn't matter how fast they go, it'll still pile onto that sidewalk. Not that much. So I'm having a difficult time keeping that sidewalk cleared off.
Well...
So I'm hoping that the bylaw officer will understand that.
My feeling in that context is you probably wouldn't get a ticket.
Pardon me?
My feeling is in that context, you probably wouldn't get a ticket.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, other business. Seven A, this is a big item. And I want to keep it to the town-owned campground, please. Okay? That's... This information will be for town campground.
Let's just load it up here.
And what it is, it's a big ticket item. And how do we want to do it? Do we want to do it in phases? Do we want to do it? Do we support it? What's the situation?
If you build it, they will come.
Do you want me to speak to it?
Yes.
So one of your five items on that outside looking in was campground expansion. And you've got two drawings there now. One of them is just, I guess, the north of the reunion center, southwest of the current campground sites. The second one is using the open area at the reunion center. Now, I'm actually not proposing that one. I put it in for context because a while back Brandon kind of drafted that up to see what the space looked like. Sorry, my mouse, there it goes, finally loaded up.
So you want us to refer to this one...
The one at the campground, correct.
Yeah.
So as we're getting actual numbers on some of those things, counsel, I just wanted to bring it to you. Get a feel for, is this the right size, direction? Do we need to look at something different? Are we missing something? And then we can start to update that sheet where we have the cost for the different projects.
So can I ask a question? Those lots or those pads that I'm looking at are really meant for larger rigs?
They're pull-throughs, right?
Yeah, they're all... Well, there's some that you would back in, but the center is intended to be pull-throughs, yeah, for larger trailers.
And full services?
Yeah.
So these will be the seasonal individuals, I would suggest.
Well, we have full service on all sites. But the thought here was, then do we start marketing a site where you buy your seasonal site plus your golf membership? Plus, we give a bit of an a la carte menu of what you can buy for your summer in Cartston. And we start to market that accordingly.
Counselor Silk.
That's the one by the reunion center?
No. Counselor Silk.
I guess since I asked for this to be on the agenda, if I can interest you.
That's right.
One, I think we're missing two very important opportunities. The first opportunity is the fact that it's come to our attention that there are a number of people who use their campground as a basis for their travels to Glacier and to Waterton. So I think there's a marketing issue or item that we can be using here that this would be the gateway to the International Peace Park. Because there is a number of people that do that. Two, our campground is busy. It's very busy. And I guess actually three, is that we are wanting to pump the tires on our golf course. So as Jeff mentioned, we want to have opportunities to have RV parking for seasonal purposes for people who may want to come and park their RV and have a membership of our golf course.
And incentive.
How many lots, how many pads are there?
There's eleven of the bigger pull-throughs and then some that would back in. Brandon also drew in on the bottom of the page extending some of the existing ones to get them a little longer. We do have that issue that this is a campground built in the seventies.
Right.
And back then, everyone pulled around seventeen-foot trailers.
And now they're thirty-three, forty-five.
That's what you had, right? Now they're forty feet. Thirty, a thirty-three-foot trailer, not unusually long trailer.
It's pretty, yeah, forty feet long, yeah.
Now, counsel, keep in mind that this is quite an investment. We're letting up a quarter of a million dollars. However, the statement was made by Counselor Court. Him and I both RV a lot. And we want to be remembered that the fact is Waterton Park Campground is going to be very, very limited because they got that upper campground...
This year.
...tore apart this year. So there's going to be people looking at cabin close to Waterton Park. And like Counselor Court said, you build it, they'll come.
I don't think we'll get this done any quicker than they'll get that done.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Can I just...
Yes.
So do we have any numbers on what the revenue would be as far as...
So I didn't do a bit of a business case on this one, but I can certainly put that together relatively, relatively well.
Just curious as to what the investment is and then what we can get back.
Counselor? So?
I would suggest that we can either find the funds and money that we have reserved and then repay it through the money that we already received from the campground that does not just go into general revenues, Jim. It's not here...
It's not reserved, Jim.
It's not reserved. But it just goes into general revenues.
Yeah, yeah.
So we could do that. We could reserve the money that we already get from the campground as profits to pay for this or to repay it, one or the other. And the other aspect of this is that if you're looking at the part that's around the reunion center, if you notice the thing that's in asterisks is that says this doesn't include landscaping, trees, bathroom, laundry, da-da-da-da-da. We got to put some lipstick on this pig.
Kind of...
One thing we got to remember, too. Two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We got revenue coming back. So I don't, personally as a counselor, I don't mind spending the two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars as long as it's generating revenue back. There is a payback. Counselor Mayor? Mayor? Counselor Mayor?
Counselor Mayor.
Jeff, I just would like to know, time-wise, what are we talking about here?
Two thousand twenty? I'm not exactly sure. It would depend on a couple of things. The prices that Brandon had is for us to do it. So it's our guys doing the work. It's not particularly complicated. You know, we're in a field, so we're not having to go through a lot of stuff. It's just, I need to balance it with what the other capital projects we have in budget are if we could do it. So if you sub that out, it could be done in, you know, three or four weeks by a subcontractor, probably to add a hundred grand in price.
Go ahead.
So here is a question and maybe for counsel. If there is a possibility to at least work on the center aisle there where there is those eleven large pads, could that be a phase one of maybe two-phase project? Or should it be done all at once?
Not necessarily. If counsel likes this and thinks it's a good use of space, one of the reasons I'll mention why we didn't look at doing this on the reunion center side, we felt we still needed some open space. You know, you get all these big reunions and all those people there just to jam it all up with sites, we thought was counterproductive. So if you like this design, why don't we go back to the planning here and look at what would phase one look like? What would it cost? For example, he put in a building there for a laundry shower building, but we didn't cost that yet.
Correct.
So what would that look like ultimately? What would it look like to go buy a hundred and twenty trees and put them in there?
Right.
For example, you know, that kind of stuff that we would need to do. So yeah, if everyone kind of thinks this will work and good use of the land, let us drill down on this just a little more.
Counselor?
Yeah. What kind of profit do we make after each year?
We reviewed our financial statements before.
But depending on the year... So depending on the year and what we have to put into it, we actually only net out, what would that be? Twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars?
Okay, so it would take us ten years to pay it off?
Yeah, we've had other years, like last year it was ten thousand less than that. And that's simply because we bought, you know, all-new tables for the reunion center and did some electrical work. One of the things with that campground that we need to do is with the existing area, is we have trouble with electricity capacity in that campground. Because again, in the seventies, nobody was running a microwave and an air conditioner on their trailer. That wasn't a thing. So over the last few years, we've added fifty-amp breakers because now, how many air conditioners you run at any given time?
I just run one, but I shouldn't run two. You got built-in fireplaces or like anything else.
So the demand has gotten so much richer. The wiring is our issue in that campground. So it's not a supply issue and it's not a breaker issue anymore. It's the ability of the wire to carry that much electricity.
This is why Waterton's replacing everything up there.
Yeah.
That building was designed for the fifties and sixties in front of getting caught up with it.
Now, Jeff, do we need to go back to our contractor that runs the campground? Because I know, and Counselor Court will agree to this, when you pull into a campground, there's two different charges for a thirty-amp breaker or a fifty-amp breaker. I've found that in a couple of camps.
There's usually, you're using electricity or electricity and water.
You have power or you don't have power?
It's usually not your apps, it's what the services you're getting.
Ours is staged between power or power through water.
Yeah, that's usually how it goes.
And almost everything's fifty now. So we have, we spent about five thousand a year for the last few years to get all the pedestals replaced with fifty. But now we have, like I said, Leonard's saying, we have more of a wiring capacity issue and at some off-season, we need to trench all through there and replace wiring. So we could also look at that as part of a phase of this, for example.
Now, a few years ago, I was a member of the chairman, the president of the Rotary Club. And at one time, they were looking at possibly building another kitchen down on the south end of that reunion center place. But it would be open-walled. So it would be just a family picnic area, which would be a nice addition. So maybe could we go back to the Rotary Club and see if they're still interested in developing some of that reunion center play? Gary, Counselor Silk?
I would suggest the Rotary Clubs probably got their hands full with this great part. We're probably going to ask them for some money for the rec centers.
Okay. Any other comments?
Develop this a little more, get kind of a phase one, two, three.
Counselor Drew asked if we could have some kind of reconciliation on...
Well, I'll do a quick, I'll do a business case on it.
Yes. Counselor Barnes?
So back a few months ago, Counselor Silk talked about the idea of having an RV area for the golfers. Are we talking, when you talk phase one, are we talking adding it to the existing campground on the north side? Just on the south side of East Creek? Or are we talking, we were talking in the Rotary Park at one time?
It would be southwest at this point in time. Is that not right?
It's by the creek.
Yeah, yes. Just over that.
It's north of the reunion center playground, southwest of the existing campground.
Okay, in that area there, okay. And the Rotary area south of that would be...
So we designed that, but it was a concern that when you have big reunions, you want some open space.
Right, for parking.
Well, just for activities.
Yeah.
And also, they have, a lot of them use that part for their... Okay, so are we good with that?
Can I just ask, can I just ask one more question? So if we're going to do this in phases, the laundry area, that kind of stuff, is that going to be included in the phase one with trees and all that kind of stuff? Or are we...
It probably should.
You know, there is laundry facilities there, but not in close proximity. So we need to look at what makes sense there. We would definitely, definitely plan for the utility for it, you know, when you started, to make sure you've got sewer and water and everything there. It would be nice to have another shower and laundry facility at that campground.
Is that what that little blue...
Yeah, that's where it could hypothetically fit.
Counselor Court?
So we'll look at that, too.
Well, I was just thinking, you're in town, it has laundry facilities already. I've been RVing for a lot of years, I don't hardly use them. I don't go for more than a week or two. Two weeks, you don't really need laundry facilities. If you're heading across country, yeah, it's a different story.
Remember also, whatever infrastructure you put in there, your contractor bid will be increased because they have to take care of those facilities. Okay?
Okay, we'll formalize that a little further.
Good.
Before we close this off, have we, we haven't had any discussion about the charges at the campground. They've maintained pretty status quo for some time. Are we going to look at...
Do you leave that up to our...
They've moved, not for a couple of years.
What are they charging?
I'd have to go pull it up, I don't remember.
Well, I heard people say it's the least expensive place in the province.
You're paying about forty bucks a night at Waterton.
I think they're thirty-two or thirty-six now or something here.
I think there's...
This is one of the nicest campgrounds you're going to find in Southern Alberta.
And we have those comments all the time.
You drive up those rivers, there are just piles of junk.
We have the nicest campground in the province. That's what everybody...
For a town, yeah.
We have to be a bit cautious this summer. There's a chance we'll be doing some more creek work down there. So we'll have to manage that and, you know, with the campers and we'll make a little noise and a little dust, but we'll... We're trying to finish that creek work to go further south, too.
So those blue lines on there, are those the high-water marks?
I think they're just what the GIS has as the creek area.
Okay, let's move on, folks. Seven B fiber optics, the internet installation. Jeff, do you want to speak to that?
Counselor Silk? Bell and AXIA are just dragging their heels. And I think it behooves us as a council to start looking at other options because we're getting left behind by other communities who have fiber optics. Concerned though is that you can attract people who work out of their home as long as they have fiber optic to use.
Exactly.
And so...
Shaw does.
I would recommend that we leave this with administration to explore other options, ATCO being one of them. Do you have a contact there?
They were...
I asked Peter to give it to me, but he hasn't gotten back to me. But if you get ahold of Peter, he has...
Okay. One of the interesting pieces of this is that the town is fully designed. I mean, right down to every place on everybody's front lawn. We don't own that design. AXIA does. And so why, I was trying to get, you'll see my email with Andrew. Andrew and I have just only emailed a couple of times and he's just new to this position. I've been trying to find out that if Bell is not going to proceed with doing installations, can we get the design? Because it's been done and paid for. So how can we get our hands on it and use a third-party contractor to do the installation?
Go ahead, Mayor.
To go along with your line of reasoning, I am wondering if it would not be useful for us to send a formal letter to Bell regarding that very issue? The fact that we have from AXIA all the plants? The fact that we incurred expenses in a past budget in order to see those plants come to life? And to try to see if they have any appetite to complete the work or not? And if the answer is no, let's try to get the plants as our property and move on to other options.
I just frankly, I think we have the answer that Andrew gave me. We're not in a position to say. They don't know where they're going with it yet.
If they're not in position to say, can we put some pressure then at a provincial level with the communication body that governs them and gives them the contract in order to be a little bit more forceful on that issue? And to even go to the ministry and tell them, that's a monster they created? Or is that too early?
Well, I guess I'm trying to decide, if I'm Bell and I just acquired a major company and is the province going to force them to make a decision on Cartston anytime soon? I don't understand why they would.
We're not the only town that has had that problem.
Sure, sure.
There are other towns that managed to get AXIA to finish the job under Bell.
But they were much further along the process than we were.
That's correct.
We were designed, but there was no construction.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, some of those were half-done when the merger happened, right? They were under construction. So I don't know. We can go down that political road? That's up to you, you're the politicians, but I don't know.
Do we want to try that first? Before we make a decision? Yes, Counselor?
We've saved money. I think that we need to have a little bit of accountability for the fact that we did spend that money in good faith.
We sort of spent money.
Well, we needed to replace the poles, no doubt. But we did it quicker than we wanted to do it, right? So we were going to replace them. And I totally agree. But in that year, we had to spend all the capital money.
Yeah. Counselor Silk?
I don't want to dither on this anymore. Let's get this, let's get this done. So either you send something back to Andrew and say, we're prepared to move on unless you're prepared to move, period?
Yeah.
Or move on this, one or the other, Andrew?
Well, I'm wondering if it is to administration to do that or up to us as a political body to...
Give that direction.
Really support ASEA's position, saying that we are concerned with the answer, which is no answer.
So what are you getting, Mayor, that we lobby the provincial government who's, all of them are in the throes of, you know, heading into election or ignoring pretty much everything? So we can dither on this for another three months while we have an election? Or we can get some other quotes?
Tell us about options. Who else, who else does this besides AXIA?
ATCO does, yeah.
ATCO?
Yes.
Anybody else besides them?
Well, I think what's going to happen, Counselor Court, is that ATCO's going to start moving, then Shaw's going to start moving, then everybody else is going to jump on board and start doing what AXIA was doing. So it's like, you either get ahead of it or you wait for it to happen. Yeah, I think the play with all of them is the first one in and gets to simply carry the rest. Meaning, you're not going to have redundant fiber. But AXIA's game plan, as much as it seems bizarre that they think they can make a business case on supplying forty residents of town with fiber, was to then let Shaw and tell us and everyone else that wants to supply to their customers, use their fiber.
Yeah.
That's the game.
Yeah.
Is get the infrastructure in and then everyone wholesales from them. Right. So someone's going to get to that, try and get there first. ATCO doesn't want to manage this. ATCO wants to put the infrastructure in and turn it over to somebody else like...
Like Shaw.
Like they have with Direct Energy. Direct Energy does their building or whoever. So ATCO wants to get a bunch of communities signed up, get in, get it done, and turn it over to somebody else.
Okay.
So...
So let me ask this. What if my next correspondence with both Quanta, who is not involved in this?
Doing the fiber.
Quanta, but, and then with Bell is, we need to understand how we can acquire the plans. If there isn't, if there isn't an intent to build, we would like to acquire the plans immediately.
Right.
And so we need a decision by the end of the month whether or not we can... And even if we acquire the plans, it doesn't mean AXIA slash Bell can't go ahead in the future.
Right.
We've just acquired the plans. So do you want me to push that piece here?
I really think we should. And by the same token, we should start to also look at, start exploring what the cost would be.
Well, if Peter gets you that governmental contact from ATCO, it's usually who they have, some government contact, then let me know.
His is actually a contact from ATCO.
Yeah. So when we, when we have that, we'll pursue that as well.
Yeah, I think there is no reason for not trying on both, both fronts.
Okay. Okay, the next item, letter to Alberta Health, this came out in the presentation that we had. Counselor meeting.
What number are we on?
7.
7C.
Yeah, I put it on here. I know there was already a motion to send it and I thought, well, I should just at least have a good look at it before it goes. I actually had the mayor sign it and everything and I was like, wait, let me just have a look at it. It's probably not strong enough for Counselor Court.
He would have laughed about it.
I was trying to balance the line of respectfully informed communication, which is what the province likes to see.
You have to be kind of careful when you write to a minister. It's no sense.
But we'll get the message, that's the issue.
I mean, the message is there. They know what we, we think.
So that's CC to Federal Minister, the MP, MLA, Carson County, Catherine Jobs. It's quite a CC list.
I liked the letter.
So we already have a resolution. I just want to make sure it's good. I didn't want to send it and then say, man, that was terrible.
Personally, I reviewed it and, yes, it's not as belligerent as we could have written it. But that's not the point. You go nowhere with that tone.
Okay, the next one is, is one that I asked to have on the agenda. And it's a community member recognition. And it's in regards to Chief Charlie Weaselhead, Charles Weaselhead, as being appointed as the 14th Chancellor to the University of Alberta, or University of Lethbridge. And he's a first indigenous individual that will hold this position. And the last council we worked with, Chief Weaselhead, he was very, very good to work with. He supported our, our programs and so forth like that. And I'm just wondering, do we as a council want to individually recognize Chief Weaselhead with his appointment? And there's a possible real good member of your truth and reconciliation committee if he would accept that?
Personally, I think it would be nothing wrong with sending a letter congratulating him on his appointment on behalf of mayor and council. I have sent a note to his brother, myself.
Marso.
And told him to pass on my congrats.
Does that suffice?
No, I think we, a letter, an official letter would be a better tone.
Okay.
I agree.
So you want me to draft something for next meeting?
Sure, please.
Okay.
Would you do that? Thank you.
I sure will.
Okay. Do we need to review anything in the questions? Okay, we have some short correspondence, Alberta Municipal Affairs nominations. Did you read that? Okay. If you have somebody in mind, I think we need to pass that on to Jeff and he can.
What do you mean? Which one?
Municipal affairs.
So that's, that's for the community?
9A? Yes. If you read that letter, they're asking for nominations for.
Community awards?
Yeah, the awards.
But that's, that's community, yeah. It's not individual.
I don't think we've ever done it, have we?
The problem, the problem is, is that we did a partnership once, once. It was with the safety that was under Lloyd. There was something that was done under partnership and we won and won. The problem is, there's nothing really there for towns that are just above 3,000 but less than 500,000, except in the first category, which is innovation. And the partnership.
The big gap between 3,000 and 500,000.
So when it comes to, for example, we took a lead in this town with governance. And I think we have done a very, very good job that many communities would be welcome to replicate.
But it's not the first use of an idea.
It's not there, it's not a new idea. So there really is nothing there for us truly. It's a good idea, but nothing there.
We got a letter from Carson Victim Services and thanking us for our donation to them. And they're going to put that to good use. Okay, I need a motion. Counselor Brown?
I make a motion to.
Go in.
Close session.
Go in close session.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you to the press and also to our television. We appreciate your attendance.